King George regular meeting, Board of Supervisors Tuesday, May 21st, and it is 5:36 PM.
Like to call, like to call the order of the Service Authority Board of Directors.
Mr. Davis, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for just another day to live. And just to, uh, I hope, dear God, that we just appreciate what the gift that life truly is, dear Lord. Thank you for a chance to, to step in and represent King George. And lead in a, in a way, dear Lord, that we hope represents you and that you're pleased with. We ask for you, Holy Spirit, to just guide us today, just be in this room today with us. And just give us a peace and just give us wisdom. And we appreciate you, we love you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please provide your full name and your district when submitting your public comment. So that it can be properly included in the public record. During public comment? Ms. Fish? Up next to me, right here. Ms. Level U? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Al Maria Lovell, and I live in Presidential Lakes. Tonight, I want to thank all of, all of you for your service. I think you already know that this job is not easy. You have to deal with taxes that people of King George County don't want higher taxes. They feel that they are already too high. We want you to stop spending and pay down our debt. For the Service Authority in the county, especially since you are getting the money from the land field, it will be great if the county did not owe so much money like it was in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. I also would like you to be careful with the, um, request for funds from different organizations like Presidential Lakes. And how you are, they're all collecting association fees from the members. Another one is the Jazz Festival coming to Mount Betel Retreat. They claim that they bring more business to Dogren. But Dogren has plenty of business from Maryland. It's always packed, Dogren. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Level. Reverend Davis?
Thank you. My name is Pastor Sherman Davis, Dogren District. I'm here to, uh, do the usual, encourage you, uh, with the word of God tonight. Hopefully it'll be an encouragement to you. I'm going to read to you from the book of, uh, First Thessalonians with Apostle Paul, who blessed, blessed and like him. Talking about the coming of the Lord and the rapture, we call the rapture church. He says in chapter four and verse number 13, "But I would not have you to be ignorant, brethren, concerning them which are asleep." Uh, you can't fix stupid, but you can fix ignorance. You can give folks and tell folks what it means and they can understand. Stupid is hard to fix. But anyway, he says, uh, "Concerning them which are asleep," he's talking about believers that have passed away. And, uh, that you saw or not, even as others which have no hope. Uh, I'm not the judge, but I have preached a hu- a thousand and twenty-five funerals in the last forty-seven years. And I've preached some that I really didn't think there was much hope. I'm not the judge, I don't know, maybe something happened between that and this and that and the other, but, uh, sometimes we tend to a service where we think, yes, there was not much hope for this person. Amen. And so he says, "If we believe that Jesus died and rose again, even so them also which sleep in Jesus," talking about the saints that's passed away, "will God bring with him?" Other words, the saints' spirit, the soul of the Lord, the Lord comes back, he brings that with him. "For this we say unto you by the word of the Lord," this is God's word, "that we which are alive and remain until the coming of the Lord shall not prevent them." That word "prevent" means we won't go before them, means it will be taken up at the same time. Uh, "we won't prevent them which are asleep. For the Lord himself shall descend from heaven with a shout with the voice of the archangel, the trump of God, and the dead in Christ shall rise first," meaning that the graves, those in his graves were saved, will stand up ground level. "And then we which are alive and remain shall be caught together, will all go up together to meet the Lord in the air." This is not the revelation of Christ when he comes back to Europe. This is the rapture of the church, seven years before the revelation, where Christ, uh, appears in the clouds and takes his church up to be with him. And the world will be in a seven-year tribulation period. And so to meet them in the air, in the clouds, and to meet the Lord in the air, and so shall we ever be with the Lord. Wherefore comfort one another with these words. These words should be accompanying to the believer because we know, no matter how bad it is. Now, I know, I don't know the day or the hour, no one knows the day or the hour. They try to tell you they know the day or the hour, they're lying to you. But I do know we're closer today than we was yesterday. I know when 2000 was closer, when Paul, the apostle, wrote this down. And so the rapture, according to the Bible, is a sure event. God said it, that settles it, it's going to happen, the rapture of the church. Rapture is a sudden event, in a moment, a twinkle of an eye, the Bible says. Rapture is a separating event, only those in Christ will go up. The ra- rapture is a sublime event, all of God's children will be together at a great marriage feast of the Lamb. But the rapture is also a sad event. For those who know not Christ will not, will be left behind for that seven-year tribulation period that this world has never seen before and never see again, the Lord says in that seven years. So I pray for you tonight, thank you for your time, thank you for the privilege to read the word of God, and God bless you. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? No one in the audience, anyone online, Mr. Dines?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any written? Be entered into the record? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Mr. Mike Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for allowing us, uh, to come before you this evening, uh, to bring awareness to the work of all foster and adoptive families, but also to honor a particular family. And we have, have my Family Services Supervisor, Daniel and Sabrina Douglas here, as well as a couple of members of our board. Um, I'll invite them up in just a moment, or you guys can, you guys can come on up now, come on up. In most superhero sagas, the hero removes their everyday outfit to don the uniform and cape and go save lives. Tonight, we recognize two individuals who have not only worn the lifesaving uniform in their day job as a firefighter and an EMT, but when they are off the clock, they play champion, advocate, caregiver, and hero to every child who enters their home. Daniel and Sabrina Douglas have served King George County as foster and adoptive parents for twelve years and counting. I don't believe there's an end in sight. Their dedication to the children and families of King George has resulted in thirty-eight foster placements, ranging in age from infancy to adulthood, and five adoptions, including two sibling groups. To better serve the children in their care and prepare for the unexpected, Daniel and Sabrina have taken numerous trainings geared to help them address childhood trauma, medical trainings to help them meet the needs of medically fragile children, and routinely recruit new families and advocate for children in foster care. Their commitment to and involvement with the children who enter their home does not end when the placement ends or the case closes. They recently transitioned a youth into an independent living placement, and I believe he's going to be returning to their home in short order. Uh, but they have remained available to him even after he turned eighteen and remained committed to another youth who is in permanent foster care so that she could reach adulthood and stay in contact with virtually all that they can. Uh, to Daniel and Sabrina, fostering is not temporary. It's a lifetime commitment and bond as they try their best to keep in touch with every child and serve as a lifelong support. There is no question that life for Mr. and Mrs. Douglas is very full and quite lively. Where Dan and Sabrina go, the children in their home go as well. To include attending church weekly, vacations twice a year, extracurricular activities, and all this to ensure that every child not only feels like, but truly is, a part of their family. There seem to be no limits to what they are willing to do or how many children they are willing to take in at a single time. On one occasion, they were reaching the maximum number of children allowed to live in their home, at least according to state policy at the time. And so I had a conversation with Dan, and I told him, "The only option left would be for you to become a group home." Remember this, Dan? And Dan responded with, "Okay, how do I do that?" So I literally gave him the contact information for the Department of Behavioral, Behavioral Health to pursue becoming a licensed group home. Since then, the policy has changed and laxed, and they did not have to become a group home, and yet they continue to serve and continue to build, uh, their family. Daniel and Sabrina Douglas do not simply foster and adopt children, they build community. Their loyalty to children is demonstrated in how they approach every placement, not looking for the barriers that may prevent the placement, but rather pursuing every means possible to make it work. Dan and Sabrina, we are so grateful to call you at all hours of the day and night, not only foster care providers, but more importantly, call you friends, coworkers. On behalf of the King George County Department of Social Services Administrative Board, our entire agency, we recognize you tonight for your relentless care for children, care for our staff, and care for King George County. And although we cannot ever compensate you truly for all of your work, we have a little memento, a plaque. And we give these out on occasion. Our, our, our motto at the Department of Social Services is "Small Town, Big Heart." So every now and then, we give out a Big Heart Award. And so, presented to Daniel and Sabrina Douglas, in recognition of your dedicated service to King George County as foster parents, offering your home as a haven for children, enhancing the quality of life for residents, promoting the well-being and dignity of families, and strengthening the community through your public, public, your exemplary public service, I present to you the Big Heart Award. So I believe they deserve a round of applause. And I also want to thank, uh, my tremendous staff who do all of the real work, all the case coordination with them, and are currently supervising their nine kids in our office and pumping them full of pizza and candy right now. You're welcome, Dan and Sabrina.
Well, thank you. Any board members would like to make a comment? Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that it, in every family that there is that has wealth or that is rich or privileged, you can go back in time to when that family wasn't wealthy, but it was one person. It was one couple that decided that we're going to do different than what everyone else does, and they changed their family line forever. And, um, you guys are that one for so many people. And we turn privilege into a bad word, but it can't be a bad word. Because I can tell you right now that King George is privileged and honored to have you as part of our community, and I thank you for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Sports member of the board, Mr. Sullins?
Thanks, sir. Um, as far as meeting attendance and stuff like that, uh, probably the most recent thing we did was, uh, Ms. Bender and I were able to go to the George Washington Regional, uh, Commission last night. Followed that up by the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, so, um, nice meetings. The, the main thing I wanted to touch on tonight was, uh, there, there's still some, uh, stubborn misinformation going around about the, uh, the, the budget and the, uh, the school system working with us or us working with them or whatnot. Um, there's still a, a rumor going around, apparently, that we're using seventeen million dollars to balance the budget. That is not the case. Um, we're using a little under two and a half million, just over two million, to, uh, to balance the budget. That's about half what it's been in the previous four years. Now, there is a movement of seventeen million dollars, but that is, uh, to, to get money from the general fund and invest it. So there's not just sitting there doing nothing, but actually to, um, uh, gain interest and, and put the money to work for the county. Um, the other thing that I wanted to dispel is that we're not willing to work with the school system. Um, we came to the point, uh, where we're almost ready to, uh, sign off on the budget, everything was good. Um, it was brought to our attention that there was a mistake in the school system's budget, that they had double counted a, uh, a grant. One point seven million dollars was counted twice, it looked like they had three point four million dollars. What was a delta of just over a hundred and twenty-two thousand became a one point eight million dollar delta. Um, working with Mr. Rosavi and, uh, Ms. Cobb, um, they were able to quickly and easily find a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, we had a follow-on meeting with the school board, and, um, uh, Dr. Boyd kind of broke it down. Um, kind of a thermometer across the screen, the first six hundred, not, not number down, sorry. But the first six hundred thousand dollars of that was to be used to cover teachers' salary increases, and there was an eleven percent increase in the cost of their health care. So he wanted six hundred thousand dollars to cover that. There was an additional eighty-four thousand dollars in change, I'm rounding off here a little bit. But there was an additional eighty-four thousand dollars to cover an additional person to be on the financial staff for the, uh, the school board. The other one point million, or the other million dollars, um, were not, I, I personally am not real clear on what's in that yet. But what we did was we, uh, said, "Hey, you know what? At the end of the last several years, you've given back to the county, by law they have to, anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars." What we proposed to do is, um, and at that time, they didn't know for sure how much they were going to be giving back to the county. Um, what we proposed to do is, you ask for six eighty-four for teachers in the financial position, we're going to give you seven hundred thousand. That leaves a million dollars delta here. Um, we're going to go back and meet with them in August, after we know what, how much money they're going to give back to us. And we're going to U-turn that and back and give it to them. If it's five hundred thousand, okay, now there's a delta of five hundred thousand left. If it's a million, sweet, we're good. If there's a delta, we'll work with them and try to find the money to, to, you know, to cover those things. But we are most definitely willing to work with the school board and the school system. So if you hear otherwise, please let them know. If there's questions, please feel free to call us, we're happy to address emails, we're happy, we'll meet in person. But, um, people running around saying that we're not willing to work with the school board, that's just flat wrong. The one thing that I asked, the one condition that I asked was, between now and August, give me a detailed explanation of what's in that million dollars. And don't come back and say, "Oh, we're going to use it for teacher salaries." No, that's what that seven hundred thousand dollars was for. Don't go and play switcheroo, don't play the coconut shell game, and come back and hold teacher salaries hostage again to try to get more money. Tell me what's in the million dollars, and if we can find it and it's worth having, we'll work with you. That's all.
You, Mr. Stroud?
Thank you, sir. Uh, so, uh, I guess I attended the King George High School graduation, uh, which was a really nice event, and that was my first time to attend that, and I appreciate the invitation and really enjoyed that. I'd like to caveat a little bit on what Mr. Sullins was talking about with the comments. I haven't seen the comments regarding the seventeen mil- million dollars being moved to balance the budget, but, um, that's a bunch of hooey. Uh, if you have been paying attention to the board meetings where I called out, uh, the financials back a few months ago regarding not having money invested in the, uh, having money sitting in a checking account, not having invested. So really what that means is the last board's lack of financial knowledge, they allowed that money to sit and didn't invest it. So for all those years, it was doing nothing for our citizens, and that was just not a good thing. So what is happening now, uh, is Mr. Jones is working with us, and he's investing that money. So it's going to be making money for the citizens instead of just sitting there doing nothing. So not only is that false information and bad information, but it's misleading. Okay, and it's covering up a failure and really a dereliction of duty. So right now, um, we're doing things positive for the citizens of the county and putting your money to work for you rather than let it do nothing. That's all I got to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Uh, thank you. I also got a chance to go to the graduation. It was, it was a great event. I'm, it get, it's kind of a chance for King George to get out of town and go somewhere else. I did it at Fred Nats Park. And, uh, it was, it was a really good event. Um, I'm happy with some of the things that we're doing. I'm happy with, um, just want to say I'm very happy with our finance department, what you guys are doing. You guys have really put together a good program, and, and I think we're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. I'm just really just excited about where we're going. And do what Mr. Sullins said, please, in, instead of just coming to your conclusions about anything, or if you have any concerns, please reach out and, you know, pick up the phone, my number's on there. If, even if you don't leave a message, I'll, I'll call back if you, if, if I see a missed number on there every single time. And I just look forward to seeing what more we can do this year and some of the things we're going to take on.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Bender? Lee?
I don't have anything to report this week. Thank you.
Ms. Bender?
Thank you. Um, I'll keep mine very brief. I want to congratulate, uh, the class of 2024 in all levels that have graduated from preschool all the way to college and seniors and eighth grade and fifth grade, I guess now would be. So I congratulate all the 2024 graduates. Uh, next up, I would like to also congratulate the retirement. I know Fire and Rescue does their own, um, service for, um, Steve Basham and Sean Simmons. I want to congratulate them on their, uh, retirement and their commitment to King George. Now, Mr. Dines, I, this is one personally I asked to put up here, and I want to recognize one of our staff who, um, many of you might have seen coming into the building. He always had a smile on his face. And, uh, I tried to get him to come tonight, and he's very humble, and he at least let me take a picture of him so I could recognize him in this board meeting. And all of you that have come to our office know Sylvester Smith. And so I want to, uh, show you, um, the honor we're, he's going to come back to get his plaque, and it is, uh, his award. But, uh, I wanted to honor Sylvester because he has served King George at our offices and with the schools for over thirty years, and I want to honor Sylvester Smith. So if we could just go, do a clap for Sylvester so he could see it at home, I want to honor Sylvester. These are our general properties, and I'm, I'm sorry to see him go, but he's going to have a happy retirement, and I think he's going to go to the beach and have some fun. So I, I wish Sylvester well. Um, and lastly, I'm going to talk more in the Service Authority about Service Authority-related things. But I wanted to say, since my time as acting county administrator is soon to come to a close, and I'll pass off that pen to, to Matt. Um, I want to say I really have, I, I thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity, and then also I want to tell the public is, you don't really know what a county administrator does if they do it right. It is a lot of work and a lot of balls to juggle, and a lot of signing of papers and putting out fires. And I want to thank Norm and all the staff for helping me out along the way. And so I just want to say thank you, and, uh, soon my time will be up being the acting county administrator. So that is the end of my report.
Great. Well, thank you. Uh, consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to pres- uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion? Ms. Cobb? The one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars for the capital improvements fund, what is that going for?
Four dollars.
No, no, no. No warrant.
Okay, this branch bill for the courthouse.
All ready? Properly second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Stroud?
Aye.
Sullins?
Aye.
Ms. Bender?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next is, um, constitutional officers. Any constitutional officers here that would like to report? Seeing none, all ready?
All right, I'll take over for the Board of Directors. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to, to, um, accept the consent agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any further discussion? That, all is said, all those in, well, do a roll call. Lee?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is in Bowden's monthly report. Mr. Mark in Bowden. And thank you, Jamie, for coming too.
It's fine, we can go off of what you have there, Chris.
Ms. Fish is going to check one thing.
Okay.
Just have the utility report.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can go off of this. That's fine. All right, so we'll start with water. Uh, so a lot, a lot of different things going on here, and I, I had, uh, some condensed slides that, you know, kind of parsed out some of the, the main highlights that I wanted to bring to you all. Uh, but you all should have this report in your packet. Uh, but I, I would like to point out that, uh, we are almost completed with second quarter sampling kits. Uh, we have a few more samples left, uh, for Q2. Uh, we'll be collecting those. Uh, but also the lead and copper sample kits, um, in, in a public forum, uh, we, we'd like to publicly a- ask, uh, the citizens that are part of the lead and copper sample monitoring plan and the locations that were provided to VDH and approved by VDH. Uh, there's, there's, we're still having some issues getting the sample kits back from those residences. Uh, and so if, if there's any, uh, way that the, the public and those that received the sample kit could get those back to us, uh, we'll be able to, to get those expedited and sent out to VDH for processing.
Quick interruption. Can you explain very briefly to the public why this is really important?
Certainly. So, uh, it has to do with, uh, Virginia Water Works regulations, and we, on a routine basis, have to monitor for lead and copper. And routinely, if it was a different, um, analyte, if it was a different metal, if it was a different, um, test process altogether, we wouldn't be asking the, the citizen to collect the sample for us. But being the nature of lead and copper and how it leaches into the water over time, or potential for leaching into the water over time, doesn't come from the water itself, it comes from household plumbing. Um, and they, they have a, a specific sampling protocol, a process, if you will, that the customer is supposed to enact in-house, in-home, uh, to sample and monitor for that residence. Uh, the, and that, that's the reason why we had to drop off these sample kits, and we just can't come and, and pull the samples like we do all the other samples. Um, it, it's, it's pretty involved, and it, it does involve kind of a, a public effort included with that. So, any other questions regarding that?
Do we have any questions on that part?
All right. Uh, that's pretty much it. That's, that's major happening on the water side, uh, other than we are collaborating with, uh, King George County, uh, to identify how we can take, uh, the, the tower, isolate the tower on Arnold's Corner. uh, the, the tower, isolate the tower on Arnold's Corner, uh, from the courthouse system and, uh, for, for future maintenance needs. For wastewater, I don't know if this is working. We'll go down, uh, near the end of the report. So we are continuing to, um, have major issues with high organic loading in our influent, um, mostly at Perkins as well as Dahlgren. Uh, in so much that it is causing compliance issues or continuing to cause compliance issues. There are other things at the wastewater treatment plants that are contributing to that factor, but if the influent loading was of such of standard residential or, you know, light commercial, uh, influent characteristics, that the facilities would be able to handle that load and treat to affluent compliance limits. And so, uh, FOG or fats, oils and grease, some people call it fog. It is a, a significant concern, uh, for any municipality, and we have talked in recent meetings about implementing some code revisions, uh, to include or incorporate into, uh, a, a, a fog monitoring program into our, our processes here. And so we're, we're working with county staff, uh, to implement that. We've had great success of it at other utilities that we operate. Bringing that program to King George County, uh, to see if that's something that, uh, you guys would like to test drive here. Uh, and that would just involve, uh, monitoring grease traps, uh, grease mitigating practices, pooling, uh, frequent monitoring samples in the district, the collection system to make sure that the oil and grease that we're seeing coming into the plant is at the lowest level possible, and we're not exceeding limits. Uh, but we, we need some sort of way to quantify where these, these problem areas are at and mitigate the grease that's coming in. Uh, no one's going to do it for us. We're going to have to go out there and proactively monitor these locations, uh, and make sure that, uh, they're, they're abiding by the standards and the codes that are in, uh, the, the King George County regulations. Uh, so in order to combat this, in the meantime, we're feeding, uh, e- e- essentially augmentation products, additional bugs, additional bacteria to supplement the process. It also has some enzymes that kind of break down the, the oil and grease. Uh, for the, the Dahlgren facility, uh, there was, uh, a rotor number two system that went down. King George County Maintenance was able to respond to that and repair that. Uh, there was also, uh, high TKN values at, uh, Dahlgren, not only from the fats, oil and grease, but also we, the, the EQ basin, uh, at the King George County, uh, or at, at the Dahlgren facility, there is, uh, 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 an underlayment, if you will, and there's groundwater that is able to, uh, be allowed to seep in through the bottom of that membrane, and it makes a big belly in, inside of that lagoon liner. And it pushes any and all settled sludge to the, the inlet side of that EQ basin. And then that in turn is then feeding directly into our plant, again, causing high organic influent loading. And so oftentimes what we have to do, the King George County Maintenance Staff pull, uh, out of, of an underdrain reservoir with their VAC truck to remove that excess water underneath that underlayment to bring that liner back down into the, the appropriate position where it needs to be. It also affects mixing and also affects proper aeration of the EQ. And so all of these things, they build upon each other, and it's a cascading effect, and it's very hard to treat the wastewater when these conditions persist. Um, this is not necessarily a new problem. Uh, this problem has been ongoing. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're, we're solutions-driven people, and we, we want to find a, a, a solution and fix this problem. Uh, there was, uh, an, an influent, uh, motor valve to the influent screen at Hopyard that had failed. Uh, the King George County Maintenance repaired that. Uh, there was also, uh, an, an issue with an EQ pump that was repaired as well by King George County Maintenance. Um, all the other facilities are kind of, uh, business as usual, operations as usual. Uh, there are lots of different charts and graphs and, and also operational notes in there that describe, you know, the, the characteristics, the operating characteristics of each facility for the month of April. And, uh, a lot of information packed into all these reports. But it does give you all a good snapshot of what's really going on and, uh, kind of where, where we need to go for. So happy to take any questions from you all at this time.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. I, I don't know all the acronyms yet, so you, in Dahlgren, there was experience elevated TKN.
Yes, sir. Uh, if you could gro- go down to the last page there, Chris. Uh, we've incorporated a glossary into these reports. And so all of the acronyms that we use, um, we have listed in here, and, uh, TKN might not be here. There it is.
There it is.
So, uh, total kill doll nitrogen. It's a, it's a nitrogen species. Um, it has to do with nutrient loadings.
But it, would that, I've been getting a lot of complaints lately of just people's houses just being, smelling like chlorine, just if they, if they turn the shower on, like, it's like they, they can't drink their water, you know, the, and it, I understand, but I mean, people are paid a lot for water, and if you can't even drink your water because it's just the chlorine levels and things are so high. So I just wondered if there was like a recent shock to the system or something that you guys did. I don't know.
Uh, so the, the TKN and, and those values there, that's on the wastewater side, so the residents and customers wouldn't experience that inside their homes. Um, now oftentimes high chlorine or chlorine smells and that, that pungent chlorine smell that you get, that could mean, I, I kid you not, that chlorine is not being fed at a high enough rate to overcome the demand of that chlorine that is being consumed. And so it, it could just be a small tweak in, in the system, but as the temperatures warm up, there, there's just residual, uh, line, uh, residue sediment basically in the inverts of the distribution mains that needs to get flushed out of there. And King George County Maintenance is working on that, uh, a flushing program. Uh, but that ultimately has a lot to do with the demand that we have on the chlorine in the distribution system. And you can sometimes get that, that pungent chlorine smell. It's, it's not a, uh, a, a human health risk or a human health factor, uh, involved, although it is very much a, an aesthetic concern.
Yeah, I just wondered if there, if something happened. I was getting questions about that, just it, it's something, you know, treated it or something, which it, because it seemed to have gone up, and you're saying maybe it's because of the warmer weather, maybe.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Have other questions? Um, one, one question I, well, I'm not going to say question because this is coming up in my board report, but I just wanted to talk about the meetings we've had that have been very productive. So in Bowden and our maintenance staff have given us a list of the needs of the Service Authority. Very extensive list of, of, from the highest need to the ones we can wait a little bit on. And I do thank you and your staff for coming up with it, and our maintenance and our finance for helping collate through that to figure out what we can finance right away. And so I didn't know if you wanted to touch on any of that because we're going to bring the full list in the first meeting in June.
Certainly. So, uh, it, about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, um, I, I, I took it upon myself to just create a list, a summary of what, what are the, the most important needs, uh, for the wastewater treatment plants? And I, I classified them in a low, medium, high range of risk, if you will. And we, we identified a lot of the major components that are crucial, that are critical to maintaining operations at, at all five wastewater treatment plants. Now, some are, some of our facilities are newer and some are, are a lot older. Uh, there are issues that are on that spreadsheet that affect all facilities, such as inflow and infiltration. That's essentially stormwater and groundwater getting into our collection system and hydraulically overloading our wastewater plants. Then there's, there's other issues that are specific to the facility itself. And so for Dahlgren, for example, that's the largest facility. That's a one million gallon per day facility. And it's a, it's an orbital oxidation ditch process. Uh, it's biological nutrient removal. There's a lot of many, there, there's many different processes that are going on simultaneously. But the biggest process and biggest concern for us is air supply and dissolved oxygen content, or, or the provision for dissolved oxygen content in the, the bioreactor. That's, that's the heartbeat of a treatment plant, any wastewater treatment plant. Uh, when, when, when someone ever, ever asks me, you know, uh, what, how, how important is, uh, having air in a wastewater treatment plant? And I always respond with, well, you, you wouldn't like to hold your breath for that, that long either. Uh, so it, it's a biological process. They got to respirate. They got to breathe, and they do so with dissolved oxygen. And so the, the rotor mechanisms, the, the blower mechanisms that we have for recycle pumps and, uh, conveying, uh, the, the wastewater through the treatment plant, it all, it's all important. It all, it all interacts in on itself. Uh, a few other items that, uh, we are needing to address is a, a lot of monitoring and, and SCADA and telemetry problems that, that have played the plant for, uh, a, a long while. Um, that includes, you know, in-situ probes, that includes the SCADA package, that includes the, the, the computer that houses the, the network. Uh, thankfully, you, you have, uh, kind of a, a, a local hero with that kind of, um, equipment, and that, that's, uh, John Eisenweis, he, he's able to, to speak into these things pretty heavily for us, and we're very appreciative of that. Uh, but there's, there's many different, uh, ranging options, uh, labeled from low, medium to high, uh, that we've identified. So your two biggest ticket items is going to be at Dahlgren, and that's going to be, uh, the, the rotor mechanism at the plant for to provide air as well as the, the sludge press. Sludge press is a big ticket item. Um, and so we're, we're looking at, uh, what, what our options are there. Uh, and the, uh, issues that plague all five wastewater plants simultaneously is INI. And, uh, my company has given some recommendations and a, a probo- a proposed budget line items on an annual basis going forward, uh, that would be able or allow the county to scope through camera, jetting and other means, smoke testing possibly on an annual basis. Um, it's my recommendation, twenty percent of your collection system should be monitored or camered each year. And so you'll have a comprehensive view of your entire collection system every five years. And, and that's, that's important from a CIP and a utility management planning, uh, going forward. And it's also important in mitigating and controlling INI that plagues all five of our plants. Uh, so there's a lot going on. Uh, I, I think we have all the right people in the room, uh, discussing the topics, and, uh, we're, we're, from our company operating the treatment plants, we're very appreciative of, of these efforts.
And we, I want to thank you. It was a day-long meeting, but it was very productive, and we came up with a list that I, I think Norm, we're going to present the first meeting in June because we're still trying to figure out some of the monetary where we would find the funds for, but it is an extensive list. But as we said before, we're trying to put it on a, a path to success and, and do the follow-through finally to fix the problems and address it. It's just a list, and it'll, some things we can't get right away, some things we can put off for a little bit. But I think it, it'll be a very successful list. But does anybody have any questions on that? And then you had one more thing on the agenda. Did you want to speak about the DEQ discussion that was still on our agenda?
Trying to think of which DEQ discussion.
You skip over that. I, I think that was just, I think I was supposed to take that off.
Is that for the, the permit for the groundwater withdrawal?
That might be, yes.
Okay.
You want to just speak on that for a second?
I think I, I should wait till I get a little more information about that.
Well, we'll skip that. I'll take that on my bet. Probably should have taken that one off the agenda.
There, there's a lot of moving parts with that.
Yep. So we'll skip over that. Um, next up is, and thank you for coming to present. We have no action items. So we'll move on to the, uh, discussion item of the long title here. The sub-recipient agreement for the Commonwealth of Virginia American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Implementation. This is Levita Cobb. And this is very important because, um, the finance department did a lot of great work to save the ARPA grant. The Senator, well, Mr. Stewart, as our Senator at the time, helped us get, he's still our Senator, but as a Senator, got us a, got us a sixteen million, sixteen point nine million dollars from federal money to help with our, mostly for the wastewater system, and we almost lost it because the deadline was May thirtieth. And for whatever reason, paperwork was not filled out previously. But with everybody's help, we got it done. And so Ms. Cobb is here to talk about, I think it's win. So go ahead, Ms. Cobb.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I think she pretty much summed it up. This was a win for us. So, um, before I get started, I'll just give everyone just a little background, um, on what we call the sixteen million dollar DEQ grant. So on August the tenth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Northam signed legislation, legislation passed during the Virginia General Assembly's, um, twenty twenty-one special, uh, session that appropriated certain ARPA funding received by the Commonwealth, including appropriations for investments in wastewater infrastructure. King George County took action and sent a letter to Governor Northam on November the fifteen, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, requesting sixteen million to fund the following projects. Perkins Corner Wastewater Treatment Plant decommissioning, Oakland Park Wastewater Treatment Plant decommissioning, future capacity upgrades and improvements to Dahlgren, Hopyard and Fairview Beach wastewater treatment plants, inflow infiltration projects and UV systems installation at Dahlgren's and Dahlgren and Perkins Corner. So over the years, um, the county worked with DEQ and engineering specifically to determine what projects were eligible according to the funding guidelines because this grant was very, uh, specific, and even in the reporting guidelines. Somehow communication stopped, and like Madam Chair already spoke to that, so we'll bypass that, but, um, Madam Chair thought it was best to pull everybody into the same room. So that's what we did. So we all met with DEQ, and we ironed out all the details of the grant and also some things that were still outstanding. So we got everything in place. One item that is so small, but is required of a federal grant is a unique, um, entity identifying num- identifier number, UEI. In order to get this, you have to register in what they call SAM.gov. And when I tell you that by far was the most complex process because to register in that, um, system, you have to have a physical address. And when the Service Authority was formed, it was formed under a post office box. So that required more information, more paperwork that we had to pull. But we got it done. We got it done. We sent that all to, um, DEQ, and DEQ, they were happy. We finally had another meeting. And after everything was finalized, the projects that are now included are our Fairview Beach Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall, Dahlgren, Dahlgren Wastewater Treatment Plant Sludge Pond Decommissioning, the Dahlgren Wastewater Treatment Plant UV Light Replacement, Perkins Corner Wastewater Treatment Plant Decommissioning, Dahlgren INI, and the Dahlgren Sludge Pump Management, which they allowed us to include at the last minute. So that was a big win for us. Um, it was definitely a lot of work. But, um, I'm proud to say that Madam Chair and I, we executed the agreement with DEQ on May the fifteenth, and now we can begin processing reimbursements for the sixteen million dollar grant. Um, the finance team, we have a dedicated staff member because the reporting is so strict. We want to make sure we're doing everything on our end to manage this appropriately. So Ms. Tiffany Gray will be managing, um, that entire process. And, um, we could not have done this without the help of Mr. Rasabi, uh, Mr. Bryce Young, Ms. Kimberly Cook in Bowden. It really took a lot of people to make sure we did not lose this grant. Finance team, even you all helped, and I don't think you realized it, but there were some things that they did that they didn't even know they were doing that helped us to make sure that we, uh, met the deadlines and did everything we needed to do. So Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cobb. I, I, you, you were wonderful and your staff. Right over, and I want people to know, as Mr. Collins pointed out, and I want to say this was all, the paperwork that was not filed was before this board took office. A lot of things I've found over the time are things that were not done, that we take care of right away, and our staff that is still here, once we have a problem, they take care of it right away the fastest they can. Ms. Cobb jumped right on this. We had several meetings with DEQ. I think now I can say I've almost met everybody in the leadership in DEQ except for Mr. Roban, but I've actually met him. So, uh, but I really think they've all come up here to speak to us. And one of my opening lines is I was elected official, so bear with me, but please help us success to make sure that we keep the money, the sixteen my million, because it's very important. And then I want to also honor Ms. Tiffany Gray over there, and all is she's now coming over to work with Ms. Cobb because it is very important that we have to manage our finances properly and, and this grant properly, and the VDH grant for on the water side. So she's coming over to do as finance, was it finance specialist two? I forget, that's the exact title, correct? And a little bit of finance, but she's coming over so that to make sure that it is done properly. Ms. Cobb is going to help, uh, with some training, and I think it's really important, and, and the public needs to hear about the big win because we're on a good path. And I, I, any questions from my colleagues on this? because we're on a good path. And I, any questions from my colleagues on this?
I make a comment. I just, I just want to speak, not even as a board member right now. I'm just speaking as a citizen of our county. That, I don't know how you are, citizens of the county, to realize that Mr. Stewart went and got a $16 million to upgrade our, and you're going to be nice about it, but I don't want to be as nice. $16.9 million grant to upgrade our water system. And they sat on it since 2021. There was paperwork that the county administrator throughout all that was supposed to be filling out, he was not doing and going through paperwork. And so people out there have said something about our hands-on approach. The reason why we're hands-on approach is because we have to know what's going on in order to tell you what's going on. In order to be transparent, we have to have our colleagues who are working with us be transparent, the ones who are working for this county. Our finance, finance department was letting us down. This stuff was just getting left. And if not by the end of May, and we had to actually ask DEQ to extend some things, do we not? Because we did not file the correct paperwork along the time. And they were gracious enough to go, okay, we'll let y'all guys go ahead and redo paperwork that you did not do. And so they could have just said no. And we just would have thrown that away. And so people have judged about decisions that are being made, but as a constituent, not as a board member. It would infuriate me to know that there was this money that the state had given us to upgrade our system and that the past, the people that were working here in our office at the time neglected it. And so we've been judged for some things, but some things are starting to come out a little bit now to see why there are some decisions that we made early on when we got voted on, voted in because it was in the best interest of King George County. And that's why they're tough decisions and people want to throw mud without knowing, knowing the facts. And but as someone who lived here, I would have been furious if I would have found out that this money was given to us and because we dilly-dallyed around with it and didn't do our job that we're getting paid to do, we lost it. And that's exactly what we're in jeopardy of doing. If not by the end of this month, we did not have all of our ducks in a row, we'd have lost $16 million, $16.9 million. And if we would have had to do that work, which we have to do, it would have came right out of the taxpayers, out of your pockets. You would have had to pick up the bill. And that's ridiculous to me. And that's why it's important to understand that we're not slave drivers and hitting the whip as they put out the memes. But it's like, we want to ask questions of what's going on here, what's happening here? And now we have a team, thank you very much, Ms. Cobb, who are working with us. Don't give us any flack about answering the question, just simply answer the questions. If we ask them to do something, yes, sir, we can get that done for you. And they're doing a phenomenal job. And I think we're finally getting some people in that we absolutely trust that they know what they're doing. And Norm, thank you so much for just being part of our team over this brief period of time. I know now you're going to be stepping into some service authority things. I'm excited to see people with experience. There's 40 years of government experience sitting over there in that man. There's a lot of knowledge happening over there. And Ms. Cobb, have you learned some things from him?
Most definitely.
Most definitely. I have too. And I just appreciate what you're doing. And I just, as a constituent, I just would have been so upset about that. But graciously, and thank you guys for your hard work and all the stuff you did to meet that deadline for us. And we appreciate it very much. And as citizens, thank you too.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is anybody else? I do think it said it all. And you don't, I have to say, Norm and Ms. Cobb and her staff, amazing work. And Ms. Fish, fighting documents, you know, for us that we might have to find from way back in the way back. But it really was a team effort and there's more team effort to come. And you'll see on the first meeting in June, a little bit more team effort. And but I'm going to go back to say, is I call it a roadmap to success. That's how I look at it because you only get one chance to try to make an attempt to put it on the right path. And so I think that's what we're trying to do. And I think the citizens, you're going to see more things and just bear with us because it's coming. With that, I think I've given my report, to be honest, is June 1st. We'll see, we will see that report. And then also, Mr. Rasavi and I are looking at the billing and the rates. I've given them a lot of paperwork to read on, is a free time maybe. And other, some other things that we've talked about and we're looking into. But one thing is looking at the rates and the budget. And you'd be surprised that Levita and her staff, we're looking at the budget, Norm looking at the budget. We've found some money that's been around that is probably going to pay for some of these projects. And I do, I do thank DEQ for allowing us to put that sludge press in at the last minute because we just got a rough estimate of what it would cost, about $800,000. And we might be able to fund it with the ARPA funds. That was a quick estimate, so it'll probably be a little less than that. But I do want to thank everyone who was involved at the last minute to get that quote so we could get it in on time to get that, that in the grant. And a little bit for the public about the grant. It was a very long process to get the, several years to get the stuff approved because it wasn't like you could just pick things out of the wind. A lot of it was tied to our previous consent orders and things we need fixed. So it, it was a long process, but it would have been a shame to lose all of that money that really will benefit the citizens. So once again, thank you to all our staff that had a hand in this. And that will be, I will go to the comment period for the service authority and that will be the end of the service authority meeting. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please provide your full name and district when submitting your public comment so that it can be properly recorded and included in the public record. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Slav, would you like to come up?
Hi. My name is Ann Maria Lovor. I used to live in Dahlgren. And the truth is, like you say, the water used to smell 50 years ago like a rat on eggs. They borrowed $20 million, they fixed it. I don't know if they fixed it, ever fixed it. But also I want to thank you, all of you for the service you're doing. I see before people, well-educated lawyers in that place, and they haven't done it what you're doing. It's taking a little time that you do because this has been here for a long time, since the 80s or 90s. And I appreciate it what you're doing. Because like I say, people, well-educated lawyers were your places and they haven't done anything. And also it's very important that you write it and send the letters to the people in King George, then let them know what you're doing. Because some people don't know what they do, what you're doing. And there really is some people follow you, what you're doing, and I think they, they see bad things. But please write it, what good things you're doing. And I thank you all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come up and give public comment? Is there anybody on the line, Mr. Davis?
No, Madam Chair.
Did anybody receive any correspondence in this small amount of time we've been here? All right. With that, can I have a motion for adjournment of the board of directors?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn until Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the Robert H. Holmes Boardroom.
Go second?
Second.
Okay, motion properly second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Board of directors is adjourned. Mr. Collins?
Public presentations, 5-11, Simply Angels presentation Dante Brandon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board. I'm Dante Braden, Government Liaison for Simply Angels. And I thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to present before you today. A special thanks to you, Mr. Davis, for helping us orchestrate that. With that said. So I would like to begin by telling you what Simply Angels is. And if we may move on to the next slide. We are not simply a food pantry for disabled veterans. We do so much more. So many people risk their lives for us, fighting for our country. And unfortunately, some come back with baggage and through unfortunate circumstances are not able to address that baggage alone. They need additional helping hands. They need angels. And so we will, of course, make meals for these veterans, but we also provide cleaning services. What you're looking at currently are some homes of veterans we've went to. And particularly when you're in that mindset from post-traumatic stress disorder or if you're suffering a disability that prevents your movement, you can succumb to a depression. And when you're in that depression, it can be hard to take care of yourself and your surroundings. And it becomes a cynical cycle. And that's what we're breaking. And that's what a lot of our work is. And if we may move on to the next slide, please. That work has been amazing. We love it. But growth is catching up with us. We have grown 1,700%. Before COVID-19, we only had 10 veterans. Now there are 178 with 42 waitlisted as of January. We served 23 in King George alone. And just this last week, we had three new veterans referred to us. If we may move on to the next slide. I'd love to share with you an anecdote of our work. We had a Mr. O'Connor. He was a retired naval veteran and amputee who lost his second leg. He unfortunately would not have been able to continue to reside with his wife if we did not fix his shower arrangement to be disability accessible. So we installed a zero threshold with seating shower remodel. The previous shower, we removed the, you know, framing built for the grab bars. We added a shower seat to the existing stud work, plumbing modified, the shower head upgraded. And this cost us $9,500. And a lot of that is able to be decreased because we get so much help from the surrounding community. People are always more than happy to donate to our cause, donate their labor, donate spare resources. And we are so thankful for that. If we may move on to the next slide. But we want to do more like this in King George. And if we go on to the next slide, I can break that down for you. We want to expand our veteran services. Making and delivering meals firstly, cleaning services and emotional support along with those home improvements. We simply want, don't want to just, you know, fund people to be able to go into assisted care facilities. We want to take people and make it so they can support themselves, hopefully, or can continue to live for themselves, by themselves, or with their wife, like previously mentioned. Additionally, we understand that there is a growing homebound population's need in King George. But our funds currently are limited because we are dedicated veterans. However, increased funds and cooperation with local nonprofits and government agencies would allow us to operate in this capacity. If we may move on to the next slide. Now here's just what some additional funds would do. $17,000 and 160 completely cover the food costs. That's $15 per vet. And that's not per meal. That's a dollar 50 per meal. Moreover, $4,550 completely covers the fuel costs. We have a lot of drivers from all across this region. For instance, we came from Spansylvania today. We serve King George and Caroline County. And, you know, there's a lot of gas expenses that go into that. And any additional funds would go a long way in expanding home improvement projects to veterans or allowing us to service homebound individuals regardless of veteran status. Not too long ago, we were blessed by the Fredericksburg area Realtors Association who granted us money to do that previous project, that anecdote of our work. Now if we may move on to the next slide, I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions. I also have the founder with me today, who is Simply an Angel. And that's where we get our name from.
Ms. Bender?
Yes. One thing, have you reached out to Healthy Generations, which is the area agency on aging? They have a lot of homebound meal programs. Have you talked to them, Ms. Hollins, or anything?
A lot of people don't understand. We use the meals as a way to enter the home. Give us an excuse to go knock on the door. That is not what we do. We're in a process of building a relationship. These people have not had visitors for years. And most of them, I know for a fact, there's a gun on the other side of that door waiting for me because they don't know me. I'm a stranger. Bringing the meals is what helps us build that rapport. And I have been reaching out to the local food pantries, begging them to help us out. But because we're not a traditional food pantry with the way that we operate, we're kind of getting some slack. We're getting, we have a food pantry in Stafford that's working with us because they understand what we're doing. And like I said, we're in the process of educating everybody. Everybody's like, oh, y'all are just delivering meals. That is not what we're doing. We're building that relationship. We're helping veterans who feel like they're on the edge, who feel like nobody cares, who have literally been forgotten, who have buried deep into the rural areas of our community where there's no DoorDash. People who come home and they can't leave out of their front door of their house because there's a five, you know, a five-inch gap from their front door to their front porch and they're in a wheelchair and there's no ramp. So they're stuck there. They can't take their trash out to the curb. They can't get groceries. And most of these programs will send meals UPS or FedEx and it sits on their front porch because they can't get it. And we actually go and we bring it into the house. But while we're in the house, we see the other needs. We see the infestation. We see the things that need to be cleaned. We see electrical issues. And we do that. And we're basically like a kitchen table ministry. Once we get to that kitchen table, that's when we can start to our problems.
Right. And I was just mentioning them because they might be able to help you because they have vans and they have access to some programs that might be able to assist you. That's why I was just bringing up if you had.
Well, that's where we have to have specifically trained people to go to these homes. Most of our people are previous law enforcement, previous military. And the reason for that is if somebody hasn't had a visitor in a while or is having a PTSD issue, I can't send anybody to their front door because the chances are they will get harmed. And our goal is to make sure we don't get harmed, but to also make sure that our veteran doesn't get harmed because we're going there to them where they have been, you know, existing under the radar for a lot of years. And it's a delicate process. It's not something that just anybody can just walk into to do. We use the general population for all the back, the behind-the-scenes stuff. But the people who actually go to meet these veterans are very well-trained.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public comment input regarding the rental of real property at 3321 Roseland Road, King George, Virginia, 22485 pursuant to Virginia Code 15.12-1800. I will first ask for staff report. Then I'll open the floor for public comment. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that the board is considering renting that house down there at the park on the river, which you got in exchange for other things from the bridge to the new county administrator for a short term while he finds a permanent residence for he and his family when he comes here in June. My understanding is the term would be for six months and that the price would be $800 a month plus utilities for the rental of that home. You do have to have a public hearing anytime you encumber publicly owned property. That's just a requirement of the Virginia Code to protect the citizens. So you can hear from the citizens and their viewpoint about whether or not you should do that. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, but that's it in a nutshell.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart? Seeing none, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none. Anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Ms. Bender? Close the public hearing. Thank you. I know.
Good. One thing I wanted the public to know, this was property that we acquired in the land swap for the Wayside Park, and it has a lot of covenants on it. And you can't do what you normally think you can do, like rent it out to people and make money. Only Parks and Rec can make any money for it. It's the Federal Parks to Land Program. You can look it up. There's a lot of covenants that go with it. And what the house was doing is just sitting there. This would allow, at least Parks and Rec, to make some money off of it that they can use for the activities and other things. And it's not sitting vacant for amount of time because right now, it is a challenge because there are a lot of rules that you could do with the house. And it has to do with how we acquired the house in the Federal Parks to Land Program.
Any more comments? Is there any motions?
And so, Mr. Chairman, if the board is prepared in order to have a place for Mr. Smolink, I do think we need a note, a motion to lease that to Mr. Smolink for six-month term, eight hundred dollars a month plus utilities. And that would be subject to a lease that I approve.
Still moved?
Second.
Properly second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, my roll call. Mr. Stroud?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Ms. Sullins?
Hi.
Ms. Bender?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Five dash thirteen, Department of Finance Procurement. Ms. Cobb, transfer remaining ARPA funds from projects to the American Rescue Plan Project General Ledger.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So the county has received a total of five point two million dollars from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan Act since FY twenty-two. According to the guidelines, project funds must be encumbered by December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, and final payments made by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Funds have been allotted to numerous projects over the past two fiscal years, and many of these projects are complete, while others will not be obligated according to the guidelines. An ARPA presentation was conducted at the Board of Supervisors meeting held on January sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, in which these were discussed. At this time, staff would like to transfer the remaining budgets as indicated below. We would like to transfer two hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents from the King George Elementary School and Potomac Elementary School Security Camera Project back to the project line. The next line was for Cedar Brooks Park Restrooms. That project will not be done according to, or the money encumbered by that time. So we would like to transfer the three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars back to the project line. And then we just have some little, just cents left over that we need to transfer as well. Seventy-four cents from Office of Youth Contribution, and then fifty cents from the FICA for the Sheriff's Non-Comp Board-funded bonuses. So the recommended action is to authorize the county to transfer remaining funds from various projects to the American Rescue Plan Project General Ledger Code as presented.
Still moved?
The second, second, properly second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? My roll call, Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Stroud? Mr. Sullins?
Hi.
Ms. Bender?
Hi.
I vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, okay. Lavita, adding that back in, what is the total balance that is not encumbered? Do you know that? I'll just off the top of your head.
So add that back in, including the LATCF funds, which were a hundred thousand dollars. We should be at three hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Thank you.
I have a question. Ma'am, were we gonna use any of that money for the old middle school?
I do not see that project on the list. But that's definitely something that we can, what I would like to do is actually take this off a list and finalize everything, come back before you all with final projects, dates of everything that's done. But this was the first step for me is to move it back to the project line so I can see the whole picture.
Ms. Rosavi, you have something on this?
That's fine.
Motion, properly seconded. Any more discussion? Huh? My roll call. Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Stroud?
Hi.
Sullins?
Hi.
Ms. Bender?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Five fourteen, Department of Community Engagement. Ms. Southall, supplemental appropriation tech fund balance, twenty-five thousand dollars issued to Jazz and the country.
Good evening, members of the board. This is the same discussion item that we had last board meeting. We just need to appropriate the funds to the proper line item. So this is just, I need a roll call of you guys voting for the exact same thing you voted for last week, or last meeting. So it's in the budget, sorry, in the agenda item. It says exactly what you guys need to appropriate, the twenty-five thousand dollars in the line item from which revenue to which expenditure fund. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've been working with Amy a little bit on this. In the past, they simply took all the projects out of professional services. I'm gonna work with Amy and the new incoming administrator. Those should be set up as specific projects, not under professional services for the board to approve. It appears to me over the years, they've disbanded them. Although there's sufficient cash on hand to cover it, appropriation didn't equal what projects that were being approved. So, and also, I've discussed with Amy the possibility of establishing some guidelines for the board to adopt in the use of these funds because I believe some of the things that have been improved are questionable, let's just put it that way. And so I think there needs to be a set of guidelines that the board approves for the staff so they can implement it and everybody's clear about how you proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Rosavi. That's correct. As we talked about in the last Tourism Advisory Committee meeting, this is how the old way was doing, and we're trying to do the old way properly until we can fix to the new way that we were discussing for the next fiscal year.
And one of those things is that we're talking about, was it, correct me if I'm wrong, a ten thousand dollar, pretty much a max of anything that we do like that?
Correct, correct. Yes, the brief overview is we are looking at for, not this newly approved fiscal cycle, but for fiscal twenty-five, I mean twenty-six, apologize. For fiscal twenty-six is when we will implement the new process. And so this next year will be marketing and making sure that all of our grantees know that they're gonna do a new process, and there would be a cap at ten thousand is what we're proposing at this time.
And I do want to say thank you. You've been in there a short period of time, and I've had numerous people tell me what a difference. If you guys, and when the community sees any of the rebranding, the re logos, that's her. Stop by her office and get a sticker, right, for the back of your car, and some other bling bling, or whatever y'all call it nowadays, you kids. Anyway, thank you so much. You're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bender?
Thank you.
I wanted to shout because I've been there watching. As soon as Amy took over, she got right to work, and her staff have come up with a lot of ideas. And the Tourism Advisory Committee seemed very excited about the ideas because it's trying to put it on a path, though it has boundaries and there's goals and the right applications. And so I do want to thank Amy and her staff. They're small but mighty. They're coming up with some good ideas to try to kind of reform it a little bit and make it a little better process. So thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from tourism fund revenues, three dash one four zero dash one two one zero five zero dash one zero five zero to the professional services line item of tourism fund expenditures, four dash one four zero dash zero eight one seven zero zero dash three one six zero.
Second.
Properly second, roll call. Mr. Sullins?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Stroud?
Hi.
Ms. Bender?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next is Presentation Discussing Line, fifteen, five fifteen, excuse me. Physical Procedure Manual, Ms. Cobb, Director of Finances. Thank you, Mr. Dimes. Well, well, well. We actually have a manual on how to spend money.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I am excited about this. What we have for you today that you all just received is the Financial Procedures Manual. This is what this team is calling our Bible. It is our go-to. And when I tell you I have to start by saying this, I'm so proud of this team. I'm very proud of this team. I get a lot of kudos, but they're the ones that do the work. They're the ones that push us to be better every day. And they're the ones that made sure this was the way it was supposed to be. All right? On this past Friday, the Finance Department, we held a meeting with department heads, their second, anyone that had anything to do with the finances. We wanted to make sure to touch base with them because we wanted to make sure that we connected and that we understand each other so that we can better manage the finances of this county. Our contact information is out there because we've had some changes. So now everyone knows exactly how to get in touch with us and who's in charge of what. Our objectives when we put this manual together was to increase oversight of budgets at department level by giving department heads access to view their financial reports as needed, improve efficiency in the Finance Department, improve productivity levels and lower accounts payable processing costs, and then have more effective communication between Finance and the King George Departments. The first item that you'll have in your book is the Internal Budget Revision Form. What we've been doing over the past years that we found out does not work is cleaning up budgets at the end of the fiscal year. The problem that we have with doing that is what if there isn't money left? Where is it gonna come from? The best way to do it is to manage it while we're in the process. So this Internal Budget Revision Form is for department heads to fill out. So if they need to move money from one item to another to cover an expense, they can fill this out, and it has to be approved by the county administrator. And we will move the money to that line item within their budget. This ensures that there's no negative budgets at the end of the fiscal year and Finance is not cleaning up. It makes a lot more work for us if we have to do it that way. Another thing that we put in their budget or in the manual is how to run their own financial reports. So we just put a step-by-step directions on how to do that. I'll just kind of go through this. But how, like how to print a trial balance. This gives them details of everything that's been posted on the expenditure side. And they can also run their revenues as well if they're like Parks and Rec or another fund like that. The other section is accounts payable. Now, we have the submission of accounts payable for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. What we've done is where are, instead of us running checks every week, we've moved to running two batches a month. And as you can see, they're due, and then the, like, June twenty-sixth is due. But then the check will be posted for July second. What we've done is made this so that it's after a board meeting. So all of our expenditures will now be in the board book. So you'll see everything. Now, we still have the ability to run an off-cycle if we need to, but our hope is we won't have to do that. The reason why this is so important is because we'll be able to tell the Treasurer's Office, this is how much money we'll need for this AP batch run so that they don't have thirty-two million, or I'm just throwing out a number. I can't say that's accurate, but thirty-two million in the checking account. They can take some of that money and invest that. Another thing is our AP control sheet. This just keeps us all on one accord. Everyone over the years has done their own thing. This just keeps us all on one accord. This is another thing we're excited about. It's our Vendor Direct Deposit Authorization Form. With, by the end of this week, we will be sending out letters to our vendors asking them to please fill this out and send it back because we would like to go to ACH as opposed to sending out paper checks every month. It costs a lot of money because we have to buy the checks. The other issues that we have is that there have been issues with the mail. So checks get lost all the time. And then what we have to do, it costs more work on Finance because now we have to go in, stop payment on the check. We have to reissue the check, resend the check. It's a lot of steps that we have to go through. So this is gonna save us a lot of time and money. And I'm pretty sure the vendors would prefer to get their money faster. This is just for the staff. We put in the payroll schedule so they know when time sheets are due and then their pay dates, and also the holidays are included there. Another thing we did reiterate, there is a hard deadline, ten AM on those days. Purchasing. I just kind of put down the different things that are included in your purchasing, in your manual. It's the King George County Purchasing Manual, a purchase requisition form, which is anytime there's a purchase that is over our small purchase threshold of five thousand dollars, it should be accompanied by a purchase or rec. They should submit that to Finance before it is purchased. We need to approve it first. Purchase Order Modification Form, that just, if you already have a purchase order, but you need to do a change order, something happened, you need to buy more of a widget or whatever the case is, you would utilize that. Quote Documentation Summary. We use that to compare apples-to-apples quotes. Surplus Property Form, and then our Credit Card Policy Procedures. I'll go, I think I put a, I did, surplus property form. I put this in here because we've had excess, like, vehicles that are turned over to us. What we want them to start doing now is to fill out this form to include the make the model, description, VIN number, the condition. We want them to take pictures, and we also want them to remove the decals. Reason being, if they do the work prior to us getting it, we can move it faster off the lot. A lot of times what happens is they will bring the vehicles, drop them off, and then we're stuck doing all of that work, and it takes a lot more time. So if we can get them to do the work and we post it on surplus property, then we can turn those vehicles around and have more money added to the general fund. That is my presentation. Any questions?
Ms. Cobb, thank you. Appreciate that. Long time coming. I did take your training when you were doing the training with the folks. So, but I didn't get any credit, Mr. Dimes, on my training catalog.
It's only cybersecurity, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from the board?
Yes, I do. This is what you're talking about when you're running for office and you're talking about cutting the fat and cutting the wasteful spending. It just, time equals money, right? And this, this right here is what I call transparency. This is transparency. This is, the people of King George know what's happening, seeing how the money's spent, and keeping those accountable for how they're spending the money, right? I mean, this is exactly, this is exactly what we wanted, exactly what we needed. Thank all you ladies for all your time. You put, don't ever think you're not appreciated. Thank you very, very much for this. This is, this is a, this is a Godsend. Thank you very much.
Sam, you have a comment?
I do, yes. So, a couple things. I mean, everything that's been said, plus the vendor direct deposit, I mean, that's huge. For people who aren't familiar with uh, the ACH process with the vendors, the amount of work that's done with checks and the data entry and trying to track it, the repetitive work is just insane. So um, the things that we, we want to do is become more efficient. We want to work smarter, not harder. Okay, you have embodied that. You're implementing it, you're doing it. And, and for those people that know, know how huge it is and those that don't, I'm telling you, this is a huge thing and these are some huge steps forward. I really like the procurement purchasing portion of it because it, it definitely lays out, this is gonna benefit the employees, the, the department heads, um, everyone. And it's clear, it's simple and it, it breaks it down Barney styles, we call it in the Marine Corps. So thank you very much. Um, and, and you, you're possibly first with putting something like this out. I would like Mr. Rosavi to talk about this, but whenever Mr. Smolink gets on board, standardizing and implementing SOPs across the county um, for those departments that don't have them. And that way there's, you know, we know what to do. Somebody's not at work, somebody gets hit by the bus, we say. We have procedures in place and, you know, combined with the new password software where people can enter their passwords. So again, something happens and, and it does, sometimes something happens and somebody has to recover accounts. Somebody has to step in in their place. You have access to it and you can just step in and do these things. So the county and the people, the employees, you guys are doing some really good things. And this is really huge. Very grateful. Thank you so much to all of you.
Ms. Bender?
I just want to say briefly, I came in at the end of the meeting on Friday where you were explaining to the department heads and I had numerous department heads. I haven't seen so many people so excited about a finance manual. They were just very excited about it and, and positive. So I wanted that, the public to hear that. Because not everybody gets excited about finance unless they're making a lot of money. Thank you.
Mr. Sullins?
I'm gonna repeat everything. It's been said. I'll just say thank you. Great job, y'all.
All righty. Thank you. So there was questions about when the tax bills will be sent out? Do we know any of the information on that? This bucket?
Good evening, everyone. So we have been having a lot of difficulty. Personal property is our first year prorating, so we ran into some snags with the system and things we had to set up in there. And so we figured that out. We got that posted to the treasurer last Thursday. And uh, from what I understand, today I found out their numbers matched ours. So that's good news. And now we just have to wait for the printer to make sure everything's gonna match there and balance. Um, for real estate, we just posted over to the treasurer today. So hopefully tomorrow we'll know if that's a go. Um, the reason real estate was delayed is because Vision just went into place January first. So, or actually not the first. I think we went live in February. But we've had some glitches with that too and things we needed to figure out. And we don't know it until we end up trying to run an edit book and then just correct the errors out when we go.
All right. Thank you. All righty, um, secondary public comment. Comment will be limited to three minutes per person. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please provide your full name and just stick with submitting your public comments so it can be properly included in the public record. Is there any one for public comment in the audience? Seeing none online, Mr. Dines?
No, Mr. Chairman.
And nothing written in the last thirty-five minutes? All righty. Next we will go to a closed public comment. Next we will go to adjournment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four at five thirty PM in the Robert H, Robert H. Combs Boardroom.
Second. Properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you. Very efficient.